And I also then want to echo on the comments of my colleague from District Three and share Happy Women's History Month to all the women out there in the world who are doing amazing things gratefully and luckily. Next week, I will be joining the United Nations for the 63rd Commission on the Status of Women in speaking and representing the City of Bowie down at the United Nations CSW event. So I look forward to that speaking opportunity and sharing about the great work that the City of Bowie has done towards women's equity. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Are there any other announcements? Hearing none, we will move on to the City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Daniel Mears, Assistant City Manager, sitting in for Mr. Lot. This evening, just a short report. I would like to introduce Lynn Board. She is joining us representing the City Attorney's Office. She's been doing some work for the city for a little over the year, a little over a year through the lean and rough, but it's her first time joining us in the council chamber. So just wanted to introduce her to everyone this evening.
A hearty welcome to you.
Thank you.
And that will be it for my report this evening.
Okay, well, with that said, let's move to the consent agenda. Open for any motions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, the motion carries. We will now move on to old business, and that's the adoption of ordinance 0325, amending the adopted budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025. As embodied into ordinance amended by ordinance 0724 and 0225 to appropriate funds for the following projects: $214,500 for water main replacement and $40,100 to fund the replacement of a public works vehicle. We will turn it over to city staff.
Thank you, Mayor. As mentioned, this is for adoption of a budget amendment for the current budget fiscal 2025. We have had some expenses that were not anticipated last year, such as costs running over and vehicles getting damaged. So this is just to bring our books in order, to account for the funds and allocate appropriately to our budget. So it is available for council's discussion and any public hearing comments. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open this to a public hearing. Are there any comments or any speakers?
No, Mayor. We do not have anyone signed up this evening, and no comments were received via email.
At this time, I would declare the public hearing closed. We are now eligible for actions if the council has any questions, or I'm open to any motions.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 0-3-25.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor. Hearing none, motion carries. We will move on now to new business, the detailed site plan DSP 20003-04 inline retail at Mill Branch Crossing. Edward Gibbs, an attorney for Green Branch LLC, will present to council the detailed site plan inline retail at Mill Branch Crossing for evaluation and approval.
Mr. Coker, do you have any comments to begin with?
Are they here? Go ahead to the council.
Yes, they are.
I'm sorry. I'll turn it over to our esteemed city staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're Ron Coker here, City's Transportation Specialist, to introduce the item. This is detailed site plan DSP 20003-03 as a revision to the Mill Branch Crossing site plan. It is for inline retail building approximately 10,237 square feet on a parcel that's approximately one acre. The property, as you know, is now under development. There are townhomes being built in the rear portion of the site. This is the property right across from Walmart on US 301 on at Mill Branch Crossing, Mill Branch Road. My apologies. We do have a PowerPoint to show you all today that Mr. Edward Gibbs will be presenting. The county planning board date is on schedule to meet with the advocate on March 13th and met with the Bowie Advisory Planning Board on February 11th, which unanimously moved to approve the detailed site plan in accordance with the recommendation. The criteria for approval of the detailed site plan is simply that the planning board may approve the site plan if it finds that the plan represents a reasonable alternative to satisfying the county's site design guidelines. Staff recommends approval of the detailed site plan DSP 2000-3-04 following conditions, which are intended to approve the site design and address conformance with the county zoning ordinance and the city development review guidelines, which are to revise the parking schedule to reflect the calculation utilizing the rate for the normal parking generation group, to clarify shopping center PM trip rate utilized for the trip generation table, and to revise the plan such that the loading space does not impact the movement through the site and impact vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Just to clarify, Mr. Gibbs and his team have proactively taken measures to address these issues before tonight's meeting, and he will elaborate on those issues as well for you. With that, that concludes staff presentation. Mr. Gibbs is here to present the advocate and will be giving the presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Gibbs?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Edward Gibbs, an attorney with offices in Largo. And I'm here this evening happy to be representing Green Branch LLC, the principal of Green Branch courses, William Chesley. He's here. Kim Morgan from Land Tech, our civil engineer, is here as well, and Jackie Plot, our transportation engineer from Traffic Concepts, is here this evening. This is really the third commercial detailed site plan we've been before the city with. We also had the gas station that went before the city, but they had their own council for that hearing. So this is the third retail site plan hearing we've been to the city with. Of course, preceding that was the preliminary subdivision plan for the entire project, and then the detailed site plan that covered both the residential multifamily and the residential townhomes. So it's a, it's pretty much of a known quantity. We're happy to be here tonight on the inline retail. And of course, the drawing you have on the screen this evening shows the entirety of the project. And the way the project was laid out originally, all of the internal roads are private, privately owned, privately maintained. The, the main internal road comes off of Mill Branch Road. It's called St. Ridgely Boulevard. And as you come down St. Ridgely Boulevard, the first left that you can make is St. Lola Lane, which is what we would call the internal spine road within the project. And as you come up, St. Lola, northerly, all of the lots that you see on the left-hand side, those are all commercial outlots. When we went to record plat originally, we couldn't quantify exactly what dimensions and area the commercial lots would have. So we platted them as outlots, meaning they're not buildable. We would then come in, do a detailed site plan when we knew exactly what size lot we would need. After approval of the detailed site plan, we would then go to a final plat that would make the outlot into a parcel, a recorded, platted parcel. And in doing that, so, so when we come in, we then end up having a detailed site plan which covers parts of outlots. And this one is, is no exception. So the drawing you have before you there shows how we're straddling two outlots in order to get the size that we need for the inline retail building. The inline retail building will have, how many tenants are we going to have? Five, five tenants in the building. We have commitments for a 24-hour acute care facility and a retail use called Nothing But Bunt Cakes, which has been incredibly successful at other locations, most notably at Woodmore Town Center. So the others, the other users have not been finalized yet, and so I don't know that I can actually identify who they might be until those leases are signed. I believe there will be some type of a nail salon occupying one of the other units. But again, I don't, I don't have finality on that one. So, you know, the uses are permitted as a matter of right. The inline building is a welcome use, we think, because it allows us to put a number of uses in one structure. Now, as to the two conditions that are related in your staff report and which have been raised by the Park and Planning Commission, they simply wanted us to use a different parking generation rate, which we did, and which we accommodate on the site plan. There's more than sufficient parking. They wanted us to use, quote, "the normal parking generation rate," and that was not a problem. More, somewhat more difficult to understand, and I'm glad our traffic engineer is here this evening, because if I flounder on this, she can come forward and correct me. So typically, the, the trip generation would be computed using the ITE trip generation rates. And that works for the AM peak hour in this situation, because it's a lower generation rate. And in a retail center, most of your retail users are not open during the AM. I mean, like, say if you have a Starbucks, okay, that's going to be open. But, but Nothing But Bunt Cakes is not going to be open, although obviously, the, the 24-hour acute care facility could be. In the PM peak hour, the ITE trip generation rate, our traffic engineer found that that wasn't, quite frankly, faithful enough to the trips that would be generated, because it's a lower rate than what she used. The ITE trip generation rate was around 3.8 trips, I think, and the, the rate that she used was around 6.21 trips, which basically is not quite double, but almost double. And so Park and Plan, and we did this, by the way, this is not, this was not a one-off with this detailed site plan. We did it for the entire preliminary subdivision plan. We used those two rates to be more faithful. And, and staff at Park and Planning noted that in their S D R C comments. They just had asked us to explain to them why this different rate was used. We had a virtual conference with them. Ms. Plot explained that, and they were eminently satisfied. So basically, we're tasking ourselves with counting more trips in the PM peak than the ITE trip generation would. Did I get that right? So with, with that being said, we're happy to answer any questions. We're excited, again, to be here before you on this project. You know, I have lots of friends who, who, and this is just a personal comment, who, who, when I see them, they, they say, my goodness, what the heck's going on over there? Because it's, this property has sat for so many years. It's been a struggle for Mr. Chesley. He's fought the fight, the good fight, so to speak, to stay the course. And, and we're excited to, to see this coming to fruition. Thank you very much.
At this time, I would like to open a public hearing. Do we have any speakers signed up?
No, Mayor. There's, no one signed up, and no comments were received.
Okay, so I will declare the public hearing closed at this time. Council members, do you have any questions? Okay, young. You do?
Yes.
Council, remember Brady, go right ahead. Kind of give me the finger back.
Been over a year, and you still can't. I have a question. Staff first, then I want to come back to you. In the report, there's an issue that says outstanding issues. I wanted to get staff to comment on that, then come back to you, mister. Is that a consideration? Is that going to be a requirement? Or is it just, these are issues, and we, just pointing them out? I'm a little confused.
So both are conditions that are just pointed out, and that we want resolved from the advocate. Both sections, which the advocate has already know, for these items, he already deliberately explained these items. But it was just the way we formatted the staff memo with the outstanding issues and the conditions of approval. So they're both conditions that we wanted to, the advocate to be aware of, and ultimately resolve those issues. So it was just the way we formatted the memo.
Okay. Yeah, and, and before number three, outstanding issues, there are the two conditions that are repeated as part of the approval, approval with the following condition. I'm just asking, where does this stand? Is this something we should add as a condition? Add as a consideration? Or is it just pointing out the obvious?
So it's ultimately just pointing out the obvious, because we already, the advocate's already been made, made aware of the issue. So yeah, it's just really pointing out the obvious. But we didn't have to add it into the conditions of approval, because we already added it on to the memo, so.
Okay. Do you have any comments on, on the issue? Do you know which one I'm talking about? Shall I read it for you?
Sure, if you could, please.
No problem. It says, "The proposed loading space is co-located with a parking lot drive aisle impacting vehicular and pedestrian traffic through the site. Revise this plan such that the loading space does not impact movement through the site."
Okay. Our civil engineer advises me that, first of all, that comment also came from staff at Park and Planning.
Right.
And our civil engineer advises me that we have revised the plan already to accommodate that, so.
Okay.
But it was, it was, it was an apt and fair comment, and we adjusted the plan to take care of it.
Okay. I'm glad to see that it's been taken care of. The only other question I have is, you mentioned that when you had the original approval, these were plotted as outlots. And now you are being specific, so you're adjusting the, the footprint to accommodate what your, your tenant needs.
Correct.
Does that create a headache in the review process with Park and Planning? Or is this normal business?
No, it's, it's quite normal. You know, I represent the developer of Woodmore Town Center as well, and we did that with virtually every portion of the commercial component at Woodmore Town Center. It's just that when you have a, a large project like this, you, you don't really know exactly what size commercial lots these users are going to need. But yet, we wanted to go to record plat with the entire project when we came in. And so this, this is very common. Park and Planning is very used to dealing with this, and it's, it's, it's pretty flawless.
I appreciate the answer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions? Anyone?
Thank you very much.
Hearing none on operative motions? Did you have some questions there?
Yes. Quick question. Just a quick question, and this is more of an internal structural question. The, the five tenants on this, this inline, is it broken down into square footage already? Or what square footage? If so, what square footage is that?
That, that's a good question. I don't, I don't, you need to come up and identify yourself.
Hi, for the record, my name's Kim Morgan. I'm with the Land Tech Corporation. Right now, the urgent care is approximately 3,000 square feet. The building was broken up into approximately 1,500 square feet sections, so that there was ultimately five sections of those. And the, the urgent care is going to take one of those, and the other tenant that Ed mentioned is going to take one of the 1,500. And Mr. Chesley's still working with the others to try to figure out how much they're going to take.
Thank you much. Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, I will open the floor. It says eligible for action.
All right, so I was going to let the councilman do it, because this is history.
Yeah, and both of our red lights are on, so I think we can, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to, to approve site plan DSP 20003-4 for the inline retail at Mill Branch Crossing.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion?
Councilman, just with, with the conditions as noted in the staff report, right? The two.
Okay.
Yes.
Would you like to?
I'm just saying, with those conditions.
Yes. Do you want to?
No, you don't have to.
Okay, with, with the conditions.
Right.
That.
The staff.
The staff has, has reported.
And you can give it down on the second?
And I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and properly second. Thank you, Danny. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same favor. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now have the City of Bowie Wayfinding Plan. The consultants who are Guide Studio Inc. will brief the city council on the wayfinding plans, concepts, and strategies.
Mayor and Council, Ron Coker here again. And I'm pleased to introduce Erica Deutsch and the wayfinding team, Guide Studio. This project was introduced and passed by the city council on February 20th of last year, 2024. The purpose of this project is to help implement a comprehensive, user-friendly wayfinding system that identifies logical routes and ensures users can easily navigate along our trail system into nearby destinations. This system will connect the dots and establish a strong community image while increasing the safety and connectivity of Bowie's trail system. It will also emphasize, emphasize the importance of Bowie's parks, shopping malls, and communities, community centers, and universities. Guide Studio and Erica has, have been working effortlessly, effortlessly, I apologize, to produce a unique design for us. Their attention to detail has resulted in a system that truly reflects our community's identity and aspirations. We are incredibly impressed and thankful for their creative and prof, creativity and professionalism. And with that, I'll give it over to Ms. Erica.
Thank you, Ridwan. Hi, everyone. Erica Deutsch. I am with Guide Studio. We are a branding and wayfinding firm out of Cleveland, Ohio. I have been with Guide for about 17 years now. I am the project manager for this project. I'm going to take you through our process and where we are today, and then ultimately just talk to you about the final deliverable that we will be giving to you guys in a couple of months here. So the process that we've had so far is we've had a discussion with our core client team. We had a discovery session with our steering committee, so a steering committee was created. We did a driving tour of the city. We did an internal strategy session that's with our team. And then we also did a review session with the core client team. We developed a positioning strategy for the Bowie byway. We also have done a wayfinding assessment, and then we also are right now in the schematic design, so you guys will see that as well. So just to give you a little bit of a recap of what we learned from the steering committee, we always start with project goals. And while wayfinding is important for all communities, the goals are not always the same. So your goals were to have brand cohesion. You guys just went through a rebranding process, and we want to make sure that your brand is out there in the community. We want to connect residents with your city amenities and your assets. We want to inform visitors of your city amenities and assets. And we want to ensure users have a sense of community when using the byway. And then we also want to connect to other communities and then regional and national destinations as well. So we asked everyone if they could describe Bowie in one word. What would that be? And we actually put the, we wanted everybody to use a personality word. So some of the ones that rose to the top were the ones in red. word. Uh, so some of the ones that rose to the top were the ones in red, potential and inclusive. And then we also had, on the other side of that, disconnected and schizophrenic. We did an ideal day here in Bowie. So we asked everybody if they were entertaining someone from out of town who's never been here, tell us all of the things that you would do with them to show off Bowie. Um, and you know, this is where, you know, you kind of show some love for your city and talk about all of the great things and the assets that you have here. So some of the common themes were the trails and the parks, Old Town Bowie, Allen Pond Park, um, the WBNA Trail, and then Bel Air Mansion are some of the highlights that we heard. Then we simply asked them to help us do our job. We've split up into groups, and we have big, large maps, and we start marking on those maps. So one of the first activities that we ask is to identify the top visitor destinations. We can't put everything on every sign, right? So we need to start making sure that we're prioritizing destinations. So as you can see, on the right-hand side here, we have all of the visitor destinations that the steering committee came up with, and then we put them into tiers. So tier one is the one that both groups, I think we had two groups, two groups um starred and said that these were the most popular destinations, and then tier two was either in one group or the other. Um, and then tier three was just kind of listed on the list for both of the groups. So you can see tier one is Allen Pond Park, Puxatacon Wildlife Refuge, and I say that wrong every single time, I know. You would think by now I can say it right, and Bowie State University, and then uh tier three and or tier two and tier three are other destinations. We also um went through, where does it where does it feel like you've arrived into Bowie? So we always want to know that. Um, and again, we saw things through the byway. Um, and then public parking, we want to identify public parking. We want to identify areas of high pedestrian traffic, so we want to make sure that um we're noting where lots of people are gathering and walking, and then obviously the other bike paths. So the distinct advantages. So distinct advantages are a unique mix of authentic qualities and attributes that make your community stand out from other communities. And so here is what we came up with for Bowie. Bowie first. So Bowie byway is designed with Bowie residents in mind, right? We want to make sure that the residents understand that they can use this byway to get from the north to the south and to other um destinations. We want people to park their car. We want people to park their car, get out and explore. We also want people to know Bowie and beyond. You can explore things within Bowie, but also the byway can get you out and beyond Bowie as well, and then also broaden your horizons. So you can go to school, you can go to shopping center, or you can also go beyond Bowie on the byway. Key audiences. So it always starts with the people. We begin to define who will be your initial target for brand communication. So we can't communicate all things to all people, so we want to really hone in on who our target audiences are. And through this these exercises with the steering committee, we came up with um the residents. So these are seasoned cyclists, uh Bowie residents who bike regularly and are familiar with the byway. Then we have residents who are infrequent or noncyclists. So again, Bowie residents who cycle infrequently and maybe typically for recreation purposes. We want them to realize that they can use this to get to and from different places. And then small business owners, um existing or prospective business owners in Bowie. And then, of course, visitors. Um, visitors are the people looking for an off the beaten path place, a home base to visit, Baltimore, Annapolis, DC, all the different places. So they're looking for things to do. So positioning. What is a positioning statement? So it's a simple and concise internal statement. That's very key. So this is an internal statement. This isn't something you put on the website. This is something um that the city uses to talk about the byway. So the one that we created for the byway is designed with residents' needs in mind. The Bowie byway provides an excellent alternative to car travel for navigating Bowie and its surroundings. Residents can conveniently commute to work, complete daily errands, and discover numerous local amenities, all while saving gas and helping the environment. Meanwhile, visitors can easily access dining, shopping, and entertainment options, contributing to a more eco-friendly travel experience. And you can see within the positioning statement, we are talking about those key audiences that we recognized. The brand narrative uh takes the positioning statement to a next level, and this is the outward-facing piece that you can put on websites. This is how you start talking about the byway, to let people know about it. Um, I won't read it to you. It's it's longer than the positioning statement, but um i- it's just an outward-facing position statement. So our analysis and recommendations for the wayfinding portion. So the first thing is the current challenges. So what we've noticed was a lack of signage, inconsistent signage and visual cues, a lack of knowledge or understanding of the actual byway. Um, it's not fully connected yet, perceived distances, and then the difficulty of thinking that it's a very high-level experience that you need to ride it, and then the lack of bike parking and bike amenities on it. So here we talk about what the byway is, um, and then what our top destinations are. Again, they're the same ones that I talked about earlier. But then we went ahead and we looked at these, what we're calling activity hubs, and it's the Bowie Town Center, Melford, Old Bowie, the high school performing arts kind of campus over there, and then South Lake. Um, and so those kind of areas where we recognize that there were higher pedestrian traffic concentration and um where there was more activity happening in those areas. We wanted to make sure that we recognized those areas within this program. So then you can see that what we started to do was put the trail connection points. Those are the green circles, and then the stars are the byway gateways. So what we're starting to do is we're starting to layer on where we think signage can go. So we have to follow some guiding principles. Um, and so our primary focus, the byway, is connecting Bowie residents to amenities. We want to use segments, so there are different segments to manage the amount of information. So what that means is if there is a destination in the northern part, we will not be directing to it when you're down at the south spine, right? So we're going to do things that are more of a one-to-two turn or a shorter distance. So you won't see things on a sign something up in the north. You won't see them on a sign down in the south. Um, we want to place a network map. Every trailhead, trail junction location, and large gathering areas, which, again, those activity hubs. So we want to give people the information where they are at. Directional should be placed at key decision points and at gaps. Signage must be must promote safety. We want to use placemaking elements, too. So not only is this signage for letting people get information, but it's also placemaking elements to let them know they are on the byway. We want to direct to major activity hubs. We want to include cardinal directions, because um if you've ever been on a trail, sometimes you get very disoriented and don't know which direction you're heading. And then we want to create a system that is flexible. Um, it's always our goal to make sure that this is easily changeable and maintainable for our clients. And then the byway needs to be marketed and known as an amenity. So we created a content policy, so we can't put everybody on a sign, right? So we want to make sure that we've given um a content policy to the city so that they can use this and let people know why certain things are on signs and maybe why certain things are not on signs. And we'll move into the design. So here's the full sign family. Um, as you can see it all together on one page, we'll dig into it a little bit here. Um, I should also say that we've worked with Montgomery County recently, and um we're very well aware of MUTCD has updated their standards, and we had a meeting with M dot M about MUTCD, and so all of these signs do fall into all of the federal guidelines and things like that. So we are definitely okay um with that at this point. So you can see for the on-road on the left side, we've kept it to look a little bit more like DOT signage. Um, so it really kind of adapts into the environment. When we move into being on um the byway or the non-byway, we get a little bit more creative. So the one in the middle, the non-byway, is where we're bringing in a little bit more color and talking about the other um the other trails that we have. And then when we're on byway specific, you can see we're really pulling into that Bowie B and using those colors. And on the right there, you can kind of see the sign type list that we've created. And also, this is, so these are kind of the pieces parts. Um, we're using all standard parts so that you can, you know, basically buy them from any fabricator and have these made for you. Um, we're not making, we're not doing any customization to any of these things. We're so we're trying to keep the cost down with that as well. Um, you can see on this, this is an on-road example, so you can see that we have the larger messaging um with more messages, and then also it's giving you the distance. And then you can see at the top, we've done a the Bowie medallion. Um, and that's something actually that you guys could put on um pretty easily. Um, right now, you could implement on street signs and poles and things like that if that was something that you guys wanted to do right away. Um, and then we have a Bowie Town Center Trailblazer, um, and you can add these components. So they all could be added and mixed and mashed um if needed. And now we move into um the off-road signage system with, or I'm sorry, on the on the non-byway. Um, and again, making sure we have that Bowie medallion. We're using a map, so we have the gateway map, and then we also have a welcome gateway, and those will be in different parts. And I do think I have a map in here to show where some of these are. So this is just an example of a map um that you could come upon to see. So we're using um circles here. Uh, we call them walking circles, but obviously in this use, they will be trail circles or bike circles. Um, and it just kind of tells you it's a five-minute ride to this destination or a 10-minute ride to that destination. And here are some of the components for the placemaking. So again, like I said, you could use that Bowie medallion right away. You could add that um arrow if needed. You can put them on existing street signs. Um, and then we have some mile markers, and then the option to add the other trail, so the 9/11 memorial, um, or adding in the town center, activity hub, and different things like that. Or you could just use uh placemaking poles, just to let people know that they're on the byway. Because many trails intersect on this, it's nice to just let people know you're still on the byway. You're you're still good. It's just a confidence marker. And then here's some um permanent and temporary signage. Um, again, keeping consistency with the brand and pulling that Bowie byway medallion through. So the top would be permanent ones um that you could see in different points throughout the trail, and then um the bottom would be temporary um that the city could print when needed. If a tree fell on the trail or if um something got washed out, for instance, anything like that. And then this is just an example of if you're going on the trail, what what you're going to see kind of when you're going to see it. So you'll come in contact with that gateway. Um, then you'll have a kiosk that can kind of get you oriented, and also it's a directional, so it lets you know. Then maybe you go off-road and you come in contact with these signs. So this is just kind of a a little trip of what you might see when you're on the trail with these. And I think that's it. That's all I have. And I'm happy to go back through with any questions or anything.
Okay, well, thank you so very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate uh your presentation. Um, at this time, I will um turn to my colleagues to see if there are any questions. I know um Mayor Procham, would you like to go first? And then you have some questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, first of all, for being here this evening and making uh a nice presentation of the work so far. Um, one item that kind of surprised me was this notion that you did not want to include uh kind of way-off locations uh in terms of uh directions. I'm accustomed to the kind of the combination, for example, north towards New York. Uh, there's a lot between here and New York, but everybody understands the general cardinal direction, and it would seem to me that it would be beneficial to have something like that, for example, north to Old Bowie, or north to Puckson, or north to Bowie State uh as informing both the uh direction, but also that you can get there from here, uh and that they're a part of the trail. Is there some thought on that?
Yeah, so in that particular instance, that's what this would be really good for. So you'll come up to these, and you can see, okay, Old Bowie is a five-minute ride from where my location is. So the key is putting these in certain locations. Um, the problem that we face is that we are limited by MUTCD with how many messages we can put on a sign. So that's why we prioritize. Um, we can definitely take a look and make sure that um maybe it's not one-to-two turns, maybe it's more than that. Um, if if that's something, we we definitely can do that. Um, however, we just start to look at prioritizing the information of when we need to give it to people before they need it, right? So to your point, we want to make sure that people have that information well before they have to make a decision. But I totally understand your point of, you know, maybe 10 minutes before rather than five minutes before, so we can definitely take a look at that for sure.
Yeah, and it part of it, too, is with the signage is the opportunity to kind of market the fact this does exist as a meaningful uh system, and you can get somewhere that, oh, I didn't know it went there.
Exactly.
Right? I mean, it's the it answers that question, well, where does it go?
Yes.
Uh, and I think if if it provides some context uh somehow to, you know, obviously not just the people who are on the trail at the moment, but people who might be uh by happenstance passing an entrance to it or.
Yes.
Uh, walking without it ever being mindful that, oh, I I want to go there, but see it and kind of promote, and someone has to say, hey, I think maybe that's a good weekend activity to do with the kids.
Yes.
Uh, I've seen that sign 100 times now. Maybe we will ride north to Old Bowie. Uh, and that might be a great uh opportunity. So if you would take a look at that.
Definitely.
Uh, look at this as an opportunity to promote kind of the the scale and the and where people can go.
Yep.
Uh, and to draw in some additional users. Um, part two is uh we do um our current road signs ourselves, at least some of the street signs. Um, how many of these will we be able to do? I'm looking at wonderful colors and and so forth. Uh, and maybe it's a question to uh to ask staff as well as city assistant city manager about where we think we would be position-wise to be able to do and maintain some of these signs ourselves.
Yeah.
Uh, have have you talked about uh with our public works staff in regards to our sign shop and their ability to produce these signs, or have we not had that conversation with them?
So.
Sorry, I'll just jump in real quick. Richard Hall, um, Director of Planning and Sustainability, still new. Um, I'd say quickly, we did get this presentation internally um a week ago when we had the directors of both Public Works um and Community Services there. And so while um I think it's fair to say there's not specific details on how these signs should be produced, they're getting these, you know, great graphics to sort of illustrate what what we're um contemplating at the moment, but that's certainly an issue. They were asking themselves, okay, we need to think about these kind of things, as well as maintenance of the signs and that type of thing.
Yeah. I would like to kind of put a a footstomp on that for us if we could. Uh, whatever we put together here, uh, I think really needs to be supported by our internal infrastructure, uh, in large part because uh we had an excellent example not that long ago. Well, maybe it's a year or more ago. I can't remember. Um, where somebody called me and said we had a street sign issue. The the name was misspelled. Uh, and they had just, we were able to repair that uh oversight in about 24 hours. Uh, and I know that if we're looking for something like this, invariably there's, you know, someone's going to bang into one, someone's going to spray paint one, and I want this to be, oh, well, we're looking to see if we can find a vendor to get a contract, do this. I want to ensure that we we own them, we manage them, and we maintain the standards to which we've become accustomed.
For sure. And I should have prefaced by saying, so the final deliverable that you guys are getting from us is a signed standard documentation document. So what that is, is it's all the way to bid docs. So if you wanted to bid this out to fabricators, you could do that. But it also is a standards documentation that gives you all of the specification, tells you how to build these. If they are doing street signs already, we have designed these with DOT specifications in mind. we have designed these with DOT specifications in mind so that they probably could actually do, build these signs. So we're, we're using those U-Channel with the poke-through on the poles. The material is like a street sign material. So we've, we have already thought of that. This is a schematic level. We have three more iterations to get you to that bid doc level. So all of those things will be in consideration at that time. And it was brought up in our meeting last week to see how we can minimize costs by having you guys do some things internally. So it's definitely top of mind for us.
Excellent. And, and for me, I mean, I'm not prescribing that we do the entire thing in-house when we kind of kicked this off. And it may make more sense to, you know, when we do the whole lot, there may be a volume staffing issue or what have you. It may be more economical to get the whole thing out and in place in short order. And it might be fiscally beneficial to do it outsourced.
Yep.
And I'm fine with that so long as we're in a position that we can maintain them. So I want to ensure that we don't have any equivalencies of hologram on there that we're unable to print and we're unable to, to deliver. So, so long as you follow up with staff with that. And I think Mr. Mayor will ensure with Mr. Hall that we're, we're, we're living within that capacity level, that'd be great.
Yeah, definitely. And we, I talked about that medallion being implementable right away because we, as city staff, they were, got really excited about it and was like, hey, that's something, that's a low-hanging fruit that we probably could produce pretty easily and affordably and put it out there just to kind of start, you know, breadcrumbing the trail a little bit.
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
And I see it also as, not that I want to water down the, the impact, but I, I could also see that medallion being repurposed for, for, for different aspects of our infrastructure. So maybe it's not just a byway, but maybe it's, maybe it's something for a park as well or something be repurposed for other things. I think it does look good.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I will turn it over to Councilman Brady.
Do I say the last?
Go ahead.
I what?
Do you like to go last?
Thank you for the presentation, very informative. And, and from your comment, I, I talked to staff earlier today, it sounds like we're going to get a design standard document.
Yep.
That will cover all aspects of this.
Yes.
And I was glad to hear you say that you've checked with DOT. You think all of this will be something appropriate under their guidelines?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, they, they have, they have given us the approval.
Good. And, and I just had some concerns that, and, and out of curiosity, how much of the trail system coexists with either a state or a county road?
Ooh, I don't know.
A ballpark number.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't know the answer to that.
The trail system isn't all off.
Right, right.
I want to say close to 40%, but I can double-check that for you, Councilman Brady.
A, a number between zero and 100% is fine because we're going to have some shared road as part of this.
Yep.
Now, in kind of working backwards on my list of questions, my concern is confusion. All the streets in this city, Bowie, have the green street signs with white lettering. If you start replacing some of those with the blue signs according to this, I, I don't have a problem with it being on the pole, but if you have that different sign, I can see a driver driving through may get disoriented, may not notice it. So I'd just be a little concerned with a confusion element coming in. If we, as part of the trail system, we replace those green signs with white lettering with the blue with the, with the seal. I'm just concerned there might be a confusion element.
I'm not sure if we're replacing, so are you talking about a street sign? Or, yeah, we, we would not be replacing street signage. This would be.
Maybe just showed that, so.
No, I think, I don't know where my presentation went. I see it down here. The medallion wasn't added to the street sign. So just saying, you're still on the byway, but you're on a road or something like that. It can be an added piece, is that, that's what that was showing. We are not going to take any street signs away.
Okay.
Oh.
That's fine, just.
Like something like that, just adding it.
Okay, you've got it on top of.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I missed that.
Definitely.
And you were talking about the different hubs and what have you. You know, go to DC, you've got the green line, the blue line that gives you kind of a very well-defined length of where the train goes, metro goes. I would think something like that, broken in or maybe break it out by subdivision because it is a planned community. And do the M-trail and the K-trail where appropriate in the K-section and the M-section. So that's a possibility. In all of this effort, especially on that part of the trail that is away from a road, you know, kind of back in the woods and what have you, are there any elements that we have directed towards safety or first aid? Does staff know of any? And I'm just wondering if we ought to include an element like that or maybe look at some way of incorporating RF communications where someone could, you know, hit a, hit a button on a thing to get alert City Hall that there's a problem?
Yeah, so as we get further down the line on the project, I've already informed Chief Preston on the project as well. So we will make a collaborative effort with the planning department and the police department on trying to get some sort of safety measures.
And I do like the, some of the signage you were showing, like a steep hill coming, stuff like that, very beneficial to the writing public. And then, got that one. And then the last one I would say is I would stay away from time.
We're actually not allowed to put time on signs, so we're using distance.
Right.
Time can be put on those maps. They can't be put on signs.
Well, I would stay with, with distance, even on the maps, because time is a function of the distance you gotta go and the speed you can maintain.
Yes, very true.
And a husband and wife that has two small ones on a smaller bike, it's going to take a lot longer than a husband and wife that are on these sporting bikes that go very fast.
Yep.
So the important thing is the distance and whether there's a hill coming up and what have you.
Sure, yes.
Than the time. So I would just avoid time altogether.
Yeah, we had, we had these same conversations with the group. And that's why we kind of ended with the map having the time on it. And when you do that, you're taking it from a leisurely pace, typically just to kind of go in that middle ground. So that would be the only place that we would recommend putting time on, but it can easily not be there either.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought that was a great presentation. Thank you very much. My original thoughts was this was a more of an information briefing and that staff would be taking it back, reviewing it, and coming back to us with specifics. So my, my question, or not even question, my takeaway from a big picture with all of this is that particularly for those of us that are in areas that are annexed into Bowie, you know, in the districts in one and two and part of three and four, it is very clear, you know, this is Bowie and, and I think the Bowie byway concept is an outstanding concept. For those of us that may be newer to the city, that have been annexed in for the last 25 or 30 years or so, it's not always as clear. So I think this is a great concept, a great idea, particularly around pointing out areas of interest. So I'm not too concerned. And I know the city will do a good job with managing costs and doing it effectively. Someone told me earlier this week, they thought, and this is somebody that, you know, knows cities. They thought Bowie was a very well-run city. So I know you're going to handle that part well. But what I, I love is that it moves us toward that one Bowie concept. Because when you go all the way out to South Lake and you're going all the way north to Old Bowie, there at least, you know, you're, you're getting those of us that are on the outskirts of either side, points of interest. Even if we, you know, drive to a spot and walk or if we, you know, make it up Mount Oak without getting hit by a car and, and ride our bikes over there. I, I think the whole concept with the byways, for those of us that are not fully aware of all the value that Bowie adds, this is an outstanding way to do so. So I just wanted to say that much and just kind of convey my thoughts around that. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. Good evening. Thank you for the great presentation. It was very informative. Sorry, it's really cold and I still have the flu. But my first question is, have you, I don't necessarily know how this works when it comes to signage and DOT. So I'll, I'll, I'll just kind of caveat it with my unawareness and lack of information there. But when it comes to some of these bike trail signs, like more of the more graphical ones that you showcase, is there an opportunity to kind of like infuse kind of technology in how, how we approach that more, the more graphical kind of visual signage?
So you said a couple of things there. You said more graphical, which to me means more color. And then you also said technology, which to me means digital. So I just want to clarify.
Sorry, I need to interrupt you. Let me clarify my question. I'm not asking for more graphical. I'm referring to your slide. There were three sections.
Yep.
One, two, and three. On the far third, that was more graphical. So it incorporated the Bowie logo and the more visual element of it. So for that signage in particular is what I'm referring to. Is there an opportunity to leverage technology in any type of way? And what I'm referring to is like QR codes for directions to, for people to be able to go to an area to get more information so that they can now kind of get further exposed and further exposed and further exposed.
Yes, exactly. So the one that you were referring to is the one that we say is the on-trail signage. So you are literally on a trail. And so we can be more graphical, to use your words, in that situation. So it can be more colorful, it can stand out more. So we're talking about the right column right now. So yes, that is what we're going to do with those. And then the kiosks, we have talked to the city staff about using QR codes and things like that. You want to use QR codes on a sign where people can walk up to it and interact with it. We don't want to put them on directionals and things like that where people are passing by because they won't be able to get, to use them. So any of the kiosks that we showed in this presentation, you can print them on the maps and things and use them in that situation, for sure.
Is that what you're recommending?
Yep.
I think I'm just trying to get clarity on like, what is the experience from a technology perspective that you are recommending as a part of your recommendation?
So we do not recommend technology if a city cannot maintain it. If you do not have somebody dedicated to updating it, we do not recommend it. So the worst thing to do is implement a sign program that has a digital component or a QR code or something that is not being maintained. So a QR code doesn't need to be maintained, but the information on the website for the QR code does. So we recommend it in a way of if staff can handle it, we definitely see a use for it. But if there's not somebody to maintain it and update the information, then it's definitely not something we would recommend, for sure. So those are conversations as you are going to implement this program. Our deliverable is just to provide you with the documentation of when you guys are ready to implement this. So we haven't had those discussions yet.
Got it, thank you so much. My next question is not really a question, but rather a comment for staff when this comes back before us again. Because I think Councilmember Rogers said that this was kind of summed it up pretty greatly when she said this was kind of like more of an informational. So my comment for staff is when this does come back before us, can you be able, be in a position to speak to the experience from a technology aspect? If we are going to use QR codes, where exactly are we going to use them? What is that experience going to be like for our residents? Is it more directions? Is it for them to be pointed to a webpage? Is it going to be for them to be able to learn more about the different types of bike trails that are available and the connections to what does it look like to experience Old Bowie versus South Bowie versus different areas of Bowie? And that's exactly what I'm looking to learn. So I look forward to learning that in the next presentation. Thank you.
We'll be prepared for that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. I think staff has heard that we do have some things that we'd love to have you work with staff and to complete and look at and give us some more feedback. But again, like everyone has stated here, I, I think it's a great thought. I, I love the presentation. I love that we're making progress with it. You know, because this is important to us as a city. And it's great for us to have the opportunity. As some of my co-council members, our council has said is that, that makes Bowie that gem, but we don't need it to continue to be a hidden gem.
Yeah, right.
You know, we want to make sure that we, if no one else here in the city, understands all that's available to us. And so on that note, I'd like to say thank you for coming this evening and thank you for working with our staff. And staff, thank you for all the work you put in as well.
Thank you for having me.
All right, thank you.
All righty. Mr. Mayor?
I will entertain a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to closed session under statutory authority of the Maryland Annotated Code, General Provisions, Article Section 3-305B7, to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice in Section 305B14, to discuss before a contract is awarded or bids are opened a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy or the contents of a bid or proposal if public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the competitive bidding or proposal process.
Second. It's been moved in probably second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, please respond with an aye.
Aye.
A poll saying favor? Hearing none, a meeting is adjourned to closed session.